...for the prayer this morning, I give Pastor and Pastor Tommy Stanley for Chaloner, President of the Baptist Church.
For we thank you for the presence in any other state regulations or speech, if you have other special ones that are in place. Ask. People on the side of the church, the persons of the person of the party, never seen them, and they will be, I pray more to bless the family, does equal here today, so, I have to prepare. Bless their homes, bless their lives, and the bodies, grace God upon them, thank you, and, of each court in the areas are local areas, not national. I pray for our elders, and for our forefathers, our forefathers' fathers, our police officers, our reward, and our ancestors, our ancestors, our ancestors. Our strength, he is there, I pray, and I pray for my dear brother and sister, and I should bless him, and bless him with me, like this time, even if he were a victim, and he was a patient, he got parts of the trade, the days, the fall. I should, your Lord, does he please him, Lord, favor him, and areas, which was going against the government, and then, there's the physical, the law, those serial orders, desires, such as, we give it all, I did it, and I pray.
Amen. Let the legal do the light of the United States of America, and do the public, according to them, one nation under God, indivisible, who is every being, does for all.
Thank you very much for being here this morning. We had a roll call, we did a class, we took a small town, uh, we wish to speak today about something that is not only a Tuesday, uh, president on the occasion of the place where you can come home and see, it'll hold three minutes. Uh, we cannot go long any time here, but it can be, if that needs to happen, we can, uh, schedule that for a letter, make, uh, I don't know, a quote of a mandate, the sender. This is an amendment of schedule, uh, nineteen eighty, George Adams, and that's the board to consider a quote of a due community recommendation that last contract with the meeting of two hundred and ninety six Shackle Mountain acres, where the house is called Calumno Berry, attended by Lollanda Pemberton, a precinct county administrator. We are also gonna have seventeen A, Dana Southern, two vulnerable lectures, to discuss a class action lawsuit. Um, are there any other additions, changes, or additions, or anything else to give us other than these two items?
Uh, the first amendment is just, okay.
And making up official page, second by commission of him, all the papers say aye, all at the same time, voting here. This is public hearing, there are none, a warrant and recognition, number four, the board to consider adoption of a revolution, recognizing Marion Joe Collins, for his years of service in Chaloner County, as the veteran subject officer, attended by Chairman Stevens. It's a motion to revoke the resolution in its defense. Now, both by official page, second by commission of him, all the papers say aye, all at the same time, voting here.
The Board of County Commission has advised Marion Joe Collins to retire from the position of best service officer, second officer, on two thousand eighteen, whereas the Congress began its employment December first, two thousand five, to become a best service officer, then, whereas the Congress has provided that service to people in greater counties, the Board of County Commission, and, whereas the Board wishes to call the Congress to ensure that there is a better service in our county, and, now there will be a resign. The Board of County Commission, to pay a county bar, and our self appreciation and gratitude to Marion Joe Collins for her service to the people of Chaloner County, the Board of County Commission, he resides in a copy of the resolution, he works in the board, then orders, and regifies, to pay a county bar, until twenty first day, of office, two thousand eighteen.
It's a motion to adopt this resolution.
I move it out, the rest of the place.
And let it end, and thank you, all the papers say aye, all at the same time, voting here. Joe, I know you want to come up here and say something.
You know, I think a lot of y'all have been doing my history, and I've been through a lot of things in my life, but, been in the military for nine and a half years, and, I said, tell y'all I love this, but I was a special agent for a number of years. And then, I was in the medical field, and, in fact, uh, Anne was a student of mine, many, many years ago, and her mother was a student of mine, many, many years ago. So, then, I've known most of the board members here, and it's always been a pleasure, uh, it's kind of, thank you for the honor, um, you know, I can't say enough of the veterans. I've been a businessman, an educator, a special agent, but I've never enjoyed a job more than I do, or did, as a veteran service officer. But I have to say this, that I couldn't have done it without the support and the encouragement of, of that of the cops. She makes my job a lot easier, and, um, we come to different walks of life, but, she really made the job easy for me, and I'm really enjoying it. Uh, our veterans are hurt, and they need help, um, I, I wish I could prevail on this county commission, and I will do it anyway. Uh, if y'all ever have to make some money, I will show for some money to kids, so that we can have veterans to come to town and don't have anything, I'm really good. Um, I appreciate this very much, and, thank you, Anne, thank you very much.
So, I want to thank you for your service and everything that you've done for this community, uh, when you have the school, when you help me out, you help a lot of people out, my advocates, somebody who goes, uh, you, you just, I'm so many, uh, what you do for the veterans today, I'm very pleased, and I'm very pleased, uh, you have missed a lot of this community, and, uh, you won't be forgotten, and thank you so much.
Yeah, and thank you, and the only reason I would say that, and the only reason I'm a coward, is that my wife is a cop, and, uh, I don't expect a long period of time.
With your story, it's always open to you, I know that.
Better.
Can you let me help you?
Yeah.
You got help, can I ask anything?
Yeah, let me say, I own it, Joe, up in Hill County, this was a neighboring county too, on New South, New South, everybody, yeah, that, that I wish that he, I mean, and he didn't work in the small area of State right now, but they're around, and it's key, and, uh, whatever, very good.
I have a lot of things to.
Bachelor, yes. I think you don't have to.
I, I'm already, uh, I have a great children, I have a friend that, uh, over my girlfriend, that's, that's more, very awful, so let's say, I don't know who, um, he was living in San Diego, and, heard the news about the, the eighteen, San Diego, and he was turned down before, being a feeling, so, he did a work search, too, and he was visiting, uh, old territory, and, and discussed the issues he was having, and I said, well, that's a problem with Joe Collins, he's making a good surprise. So, listen, the David Kennedy boy was a teen servant, and I said, nation Arizona, having a problem, he's giving up, no hope left, no way to left, or a threat, make a little source of, Joe surprised, and a little bit, he was, he was angry, yeah, like, said responsibility, especially for color, uh, and, four years remaining, and his line of problems was, like, all, was Joe's health, he gave up courage, he got treatment, and his life, and, we live on that, which is officially, attributed, actually, to the county.
Thank you, yeah, thank you. I just want to let everybody know, I have a little thing to know, the physical impact that goes down on this community, the average is about one million dollars a year, it's just, that's, that's fifty years, the average is going along, like, two million, and a million dollars, and not all those people in the community, and I don't think everybody really knows what I mean, and that's, that's, anybody else, please, please.
Yes, I appreciate what you did, I am a member of the church, I appreciate, it was a gift, I died ultimately, to find that place, and to solve that, I appreciate it.
If you were to wait right there, we're gonna, this, 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 everybody, everybody.
So, it's good on your word.
It's always nice to do things like this, we, let me have been through a lot of meetings where it has been, had a pleasure, but when we have a lot of things, you want to honor somebody like Joe Collins, it's, it's truly a pleasure. Consider items five through ten, and a motion to approve.
I'll move, check.
And a motion by commission of there, second by commission of page, any further discussion, is not, all the papers say aye, all at the same time, motion here, public request, number eleven, understanding vehicles by Chair, Chaloner Leadership Council, Inc., to appear to request assistance in preparing a grant application to the Bureau of Historic Resilience and to provide funding assistance in the amount of ten thousand dollars, as discussed by the board, and put it in, for rent for rehabilitation at the Jerkin Community Center, with Miss Mitchell.
Good morning, thank you all, I'm, I'm speaking today, my name is Ann Marie Smith, I'm in the vice chair, both the county and the council, um, I just wanted to, again, say thank you for the opportunity to come before you, once again, and ask for your assistance. Instead of coming to the council, you're pressing the board's assistance, to grant applications to the Bureau of Historic Resilience, small national grants, and to figure through November, seven, eight, nine, ten, please, the council, you're pressing the board's approval, financial assistance, minimum of thousand dollars, assistance to complete the grant application, of twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. The fund is provided for aid in the rehabilitation, reconstruction of the Jerkin Community Center, the building that it currently stand has been there since nineteen fifty, currently built in nineteen fifty, so that means that it has been sitting there, both with the state years, and existing restrooms are in disrepair, does not meet ADA requirements, and wheelchair accessibility. Unfortunately, in the past, they, there has been no, no structural changes made to the restrooms, as well as the vacant kitchen. While there has been significant construction and remodel to the current basement hall, which includes the tile flooring, ceiling channels, and lighting fixtures, there are still major concerns that conditions that are occurring as well, and concerns of the council that the tile flooring is being, beginning to buckle inside of the building, when we got most of the banquet, um, location, we recently had to replace some of the cracked tiles, which are, have been sort of, and business association, care about this. The council's goal is to reconfiguring and providing more controlled access to the cafeteria and restroom, the cafeteria will be tiled, and the parts of partition wall will be reconstructed, providing halls and separation from the restroom, HVAC improvements is made, providing design that allows existing equipment to be removed, and new equipment installed in designated area of facility, considering the doors, corridors, and seminar centers, material handling, issues, potential building structural demolition requirements, and potential dissembling and assemble of equipment components. For the past few years, the council has increased the surface in the community, which means increased footprint, as well as increased wear and tear on the building structure. For the outside of increased use of the community center in the past few years, the council has increased the BD Williams, food pantry distribution server banners twice or three times monthly, while assistant apartment, two hundred fifty, or three hundred thousand. Recently, we implemented a distance learning assistance course for high school students, nine through twelve grades, and is free to the community. Increased building members for events such as banquet, family reunions, birthday parties, wedding, anniversary, today I host a community event, for community carnival, providing twenty million rides to the community, a backpack giveaway, we're currently not hosting Jerkin Yell, which, um, fundraised, assists to bring in more funding to the community, involves our House of Breakfast, the Council yearly, and a host of those community events. In two thousand seventeen, the leadership council committed the Jerkin School Rehabilitation Project, small national grant for the historic preservation grants in the amount thirty five thousand dollars. The grant was rated number seventy-four, and the list was an increased request of amount thirty-eight five, once it was asked to place on the list. Unfortunately, due to unforeseen cuts by the governor, the cultural and historical grant preservation, um, the council's request for funding was, was unfortunately denied. Again, this request of the council of the boards provides financial facilities to the council, provide age, residence, and age, the restrooms of Jerkin Community Center, have previously suggested in two thousand sixteen. And if I could, please, provide you all with the, um, the current layout of the building, and as well as photos that were completed on behalf of the grant, and you can see that, there are major problems with the, really, they're very small, and it's not ADA, um, accessible for, you know, anyone that needs a wheelchair, or needs accessibility, they haven't been redesigned from there, was actually, um, constructed back in nineteen sixty, you can imagine, they have made some chunks of fire, but, and with the increased participation in the community, if we definitely want to provide better assistance in the community, and be more accessible for everyone that frequents our, our building.
... They wanted to go down. Somebody said that they, and all of this kind of woman was uncomfortable by it. She didn't want to go anywhere. But her thing is they were stopped building in this yard. I know what you think, what you say, what you do, there's some... I would think so. It's kind of put as fun as that, that sort of thing, not waiting for them. Not only did you buy people that were dangerous, but you bought the right view. And we do not wait when you just see that they're, it's been there, you just have some fail correction. Now, I'm, I'm telling you, I want to do it in Jersey. I drive away from Jersey with the law. It's a property in the county. It would be a disservice because it would have been a waste. Somebody would come give it up. He knows he needs to pay. With that said, I say this company would be long if I made a motion to close the son of that restaurant. Now, and that's real wrong. He was one of the restaurants, living in the county for a second time. The service is missing. You know, that's all we got over there at Jersey. If we need that. And I'm, I'm pleased to do this major, this whole as long as it's a property that's going on.
That's your option. That's booked. Now, we already have ten thousand dollars booked. Put it in the budget, isn't it?
If you do it, you don't think I've got a problem.
Well, we've got more, Captain, we've got more, but then we've got money for operating. So it's not matter if y'all have money to do this, we can have money to build it. You can sell those buildings.
I think according to the minutes back when, uh, Mr. Patterson presented, he said the rehabilitation of the restroom has an elevated cost to me, I don't know. I'd like to help.
Y'all have forty two, now?
We committed the grant for thirty five. They increased it without our even request, so apparently they seem more concerned. That is definitely a lot of work that needs to be done. Um, the ten thousands that was, um, was missing, we have a, on the call for my command, that's just a towel, that's a kitchen area, cafeteria. So if you take that ten thousand away, you're still left on the fifteen thousand. So the forty two thousand would be very much sufficient to complete the entire project that we're looking at both. Because you can see that, I gave you all the features, the restaurant is this big. And there's no way that, and I've had two, um, Mr. May speak, who charged me as well, that was down in Alabama. And there's no way to the entrance, to get to the restroom if we're small. So that's not feasible for anyone that, that is, I mean, they could.
Yeah, it, it needs to be done, right? And, uh, you know, if Hunter South Star built a restroom and a program, then I'm sure that forty two is not, uh, unreasonable at all. So I would support that.
Okay. Uh, let me ask you something. At that measure, how much money are you asking for?
Well, I, I want the bad home stuff, so we get, we get this. And there are other things that I might.
Because there's another restroom as well, in the building that we just, um, started online business program, which not included in this, we can bring your folks from the cafeteria area. But I live in mine, I walk in, I walk in my dog, he gives me, but, but it's like kindergarten way back in fifty. So you can imagine, uh, so really cannot, you know, physically sit in there comfortably and go into there and be, you know, with that space. And we just started an online program, a different learning for, um, students grade nine and twelve. So that would be great in that particular room, so they wouldn't have to go across the other bathroom and make it off, uh, rest and utilize, and deal with it, and utilize. So that restroom is right there in that location, so it would be very much easier that those students or anyone who frequenting our facility can use that restroom. Sometimes we use it for, you know, for the male side versus the women's, so, you know, just more be.
Okay, I, I want to ask, uh, Melody Cox, our grant, the grant for she's here. Yes, yeah, I didn't hear you. Uh, if we've funded what we're talking about right now, could we still go ahead and help them apply for a grant for some of this, uh, digital stuff that we're talking about? Uh, I mean, they're welcome, they're welcome to apply, the county can't do it on the county's capacity, you know, I mean, there. But the last time, they wore that, they, um, that, that, um, liquor. Listen, this is going to be around here.
Yeah. Uh, yeah, I'm talking about Chris Telemont. Chris Telemont is not my favorite man. He's loved, I got this before. He's doing it for us. He's, you know, he's always nice and, and, and why I brought this. I'd wait to hear Chris Telemont now, he has a set. And others, but he's great.
Okay, that all makes sense.
Okay. We, we have a motion by Commissioner Bill, we have second by Commissioner Pay. Any further discussion?
I'd like to play out the end of the bill, and I know Jake will be coming along. And years ago, we take the parking lot and live it out there. And it is still looking good.
Yes, sir. We just moved it just, um, we have anything for, um, uh, church folks who didn't have a restroom. We just moved it out there, and we tried to definitely keep it round, clean as possible.
Well, I'm, I'm fine with it, and y'all need it, and y'all need to get a place in there, and all that, I'll do it. I'll, I'll do it with what I can do.
We've got a lot of community, needed community services, very grateful for that. AMF.
How much clearer, on what it's thirty thousand? They're calling sixty four. Well, when they're gonna make it, we, 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 primarily, primarily, it's the restroom. It's the blue walls.
Yeah.
Uh, convert the office pool to a ADA restroom.
Yes.
Uh, so you can assess again? Yeah, just, we're making one male and one female. We're gonna try to contain the, you know, in the doorway for the first one, we're gonna try, as you can see, but we're trying to tag the one wall that's between that office and the restroom. We, we're gonna try to build that wall so that we can make it so that the other restroom grows a little bit more, we can make it to, you know, take a male and female, rest of the males have to go all the way to the opposite side. Because we believe in that those restrooms, it would hopefully be the whole, if there are any people, female over here, who's too tall, too tall than the other one. So that's, that's our, um, plan for them.
I, I have a question before we go. Um, have you had, um, a partner or whoever to look and actually give you the call estimate? So this is a real number.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Any further discussion? If not, all in such a say aye.
Aye.
All in such a say aye, let's just hear it.
Thank you all.
And you go thirty thousand, uh, thirty.
Thank you all.
You're welcome. Alan Twill, Ray Carter, the county attorney, Aswell, to appear to the special board to consider closing a vandalism of gold street.
All right. Good morning, Ray Carter, we're Steve Aswell. Steve Aswell, um, uh, provided he had, back there with his schedule on, uh, he owns the property decision order of the surface of the well, to be clear of the well, three, in a particular area, not a very, what area, the classic potential road. Mr. Aswell, um, the portal immediately ignored, that above the, our link to the well three, you'll be on the property present map there as the first number one, two ninety seven, ten one two. Dr. Aswell, also, uh, should just be, should price, full effect, thousand of the strip, one two forty nine, dash zero, zero. So, Mr. Aswell, desire to, in some shape, form, fashion, approach the county about a ban on that, uh, this Dr. Aswell, uh, in, 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 in large importance there, to be in the hold of that.
So really, I dropped this one on the other side.
Okay.
Alright, I'll also drop down from here.
Yeah.
That way we can get control of it. So I have to finish five thousand dollars.
We got to survey.
Right.
Yeah, I'm gonna get that.
I offered that, I mean, I had to say it.
Okay.
I'll be good with that.
One two, five thousand dollars.
Uh-oh.
If we encounter a situation where that property, uh, could be, uh, with the full estate going to fight it out, the court being able to enter, have those, uh, free approaching process and allow them to leave the land. I mean, that's, I don't know, I don't know, I don't know what you're doing, but I think what I-
I heard what he said, though.
Well, what I said, what gives the property, uh, the full estate is, I mean, I have a lot of working with it as well, uh, but it's more be amenable to Mr. Athol following the process that allows him to actually purchase it for that to do a thing. The other property, uh, it costs money, it's just, uh, it's just even half for him, that other, uh, thing.
So what we're gonna do is, my, your back to you.
Yes, ma'am, I will give Mr. Athol, we'll order a survey, then we'll come to Danny Ryan, or fill out petition, pay the fine, and fee, and then bring that, uh, before the court, we have a public hearing, and go ahead.
Okay.
Alright.
Alright, thank you so much.
You're welcome. Bye. Also, I understand there are none, a lot of community reports there are now, some of the government units, for taking, as far as making reports to the court regarding those grant applications, I may sound like you in Korea, but we can, uh, I think your people say, we were forced to sit across from our own audience this morning, that I will continue there, all of us, okay, how many files, how many requests, how many, how many I have been, something very important.
Thank you.
To be done, the community has to let the government. I'm according, Mark Williams, text collected to appear regarding adoption of a resolution providing for the extension of the twenty eighteen tax law, the second, one nine seven point one two two, and one nine seven point three three three, Florida, yes.
I move with that, our attorney, read the file, read the. Okay.
Now, motion, my position, thank, second, my position, are you, all in session, say aye.
Aye.
All the time, same time, motion, carry.
Resolution of Peter County, Florida, providing for the extension of the two thousand eighteen assessment of role for the section, one nine seven point three two three, and one nine three point one two two, law statute, and provide a basic study. At first, yes.
But, I want you to want to come forward.
Yeah, we got any questions about, we did it last year.
And, and what is, uh, this allows us to do is certify tax laws prior to the value of the board's property? We've had a time when the director's going to do the thing, and all the department's ready to, so he's filed the value of the board, will be involved in, uh, the next case.
I move with the adoption from the rest of ours, it looks like our, uh, we got, we have five, five on our, uh, this one. It is one nine three seven.
Yeah, it's one nine.
Yeah.
It's great.
Okay, is that one nine seven, one nine?
Yeah, one nine three.
What then, which, uh, people, uh, capture, no?
I've had, um, one nine two, uh, 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 uh.
Yeah, that does, yeah.
I've had it from the, the resolution.
Yeah, it was for red.
It was for red. I was, we, uh, I'm, I'm getting ready to.
Yeah.
So it's just gone on our agenda, but it's not on the rest of the wood, yeah.
Right, I call it, and, and on.
But we have a motion by Commissioner Page, is there a second?
Right.
Second by Commissioner Hill, can you read the section, if not, all in session, say aye.
Aye.
All the time, same time, motion, carry. We think the board should set correction of bid amount for the town Morris Home Improvement Project in the amount of seventy seven thousand four hundred ninety two dollars and eighty five cents, as presented by Chris Anderson, Emergency Management Deputy Director, in order-
Aye.
As you recall, at the last meeting, we opened the bid for the mitigation elevation project, there was a mistake, it was stated that we bid for Mr. Morris's home on sixty two, eight six seven point nine six. There was a second page that we found, the total for his, the bid for his is seventy seven four nine two point eighty five. We just wanted to get that corrected in a minute. Well, the rule of order is, yeah, this is where I raised the bid, and he didn't bring the question forward that's written here, that seventy seven. So this is the bid I announced that quarter, that fact is seventy seven.
And he had that note, that's, 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 that's.
Well, this is the top bill.
Y'all, y'all, y'all.
The tax note, the tax note said, the seventy seven, he, he gets the good amount that I already did.
And then transfers back to the court.
Thank you, sir.
Sir.
So we need to bring it back to court, so I'm asking the city to accept this, yes. Okay, is there a motion to, and?
Sir.
We have a motion by Commissioner Page to accept the correction, and we have a second by Commissioner Page, any further discussion?
Uh, okay. Hope for this, so we can think of the record, so we feel like we used to find these, uh, down the road, uh, as we did, our, uh, company, uh, playing football, later, uh, 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 come back, uh, uh, okay. And what, what, we have that football, we, uh, uh, since, I mean, uh, uh.
Any further discussion? If not, all in session, say aye.
Aye.
All the time, same time, motion, carry, thank you, sixteen. The board should consider approval of local match in the amount thirty seven thousand five twenty five for emergency management, E M P A slash E M P G grant, as presented by the Emergency Management Deputy Director. Good morning.
I'm here, I'm, 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 glad to be here, always pleased to do, think about first, man, thank you for having me, Chris, and I'm here today. Um, the earlier meeting, when the sheriff originally suggested the emergency management goal, we talked about the packing, uh, from last year's budget, uh, that what we would, family, Daniel, to clean up the bill that was here before July, so, those are all still there, um, we, we wanted to come back for the board, and pass for the match, for the budget, you're gonna pull, stuff off here, too, that, we have the, uh, that. You like men doing that, or men, like years, years, years?
Four years, years.
Mr. Fox.
Right.
Thank you, Mr. Fox, but, uh, want to point out, uh, we gave, uh, Sheriff Fox, uh, money to get through July, September, and live, give you lessons, and retard that, like, they got to be in burping. He did it, and he said, if all were agreeable, call that local match, and Sheriff keep that money, it may be cleaner, uh, and, and, uh, so he was somebody packing, stay here, uh, probably. So we are, we, in fact, we are, we are, uh, in, in local match.
So let me tell you all the problems is, that, that if it's a reason why we're asking you to do it, I'll go first. It's because you approved it, you gave me that forty six thousand dollars, for July, August, September. Okay, that's what you got operated on, we discussed it, just this week, that's what you got operated on, so, so three months. So at the end of that quarter, that's who's earning, they gotta file a reversion of that. What are they gonna do, I'll go to the intermission, or whenever they get the, 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 he's out of payroll a lot, so it's funny, and he spent all the money, it's because what you're talking about, it's the, so, 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 how are we gonna be talking without, without, without?
He got funded in July.
Forty thousand, forty?
No, he got funded from the state in July, so his money is the same way we did before. He was funded with, with, he, the state grant in July, fifteen, two hundred, so, we signed a contract, so they have the full budget. In October, it's, it's there right now, we're just intending to call it, we're on the October time, so the money is there.
You got any more money in rent, or Mr. Floyd, or something down there?
That's what we started out, while we asked for the state, for, we didn't have any budget, or, or.
Cause we can't spend the grant until October.
Well, that's what I'm saying, yeah, he gave you the forty thousand dollars, that's July, so, so, yeah, never, he's used all that money. And he won't have any more, so he's asked for a reversion of that money. So what he gonna do, no, I'll go first, when we, he's the payroll, he's the pay, I said, he's one. See what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay, I just want you to understand, we've been through this, this whole week, about what he, you know. Now, I know the money's there, because it's July, oh, he can't, they can't get it, so, okay.
So, see, we're back to the original request, and, uh, then Sheriff's payback, uh, you know, the report, uh, we're, we're, we're.
So how do you know that?
Hope we can put in the request.
Not for all that? Yeah. I'm gonna go on the, yeah, I'm gonna, 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 any others, second, on the board? Okay, is there a motion to approve?
Uh, sir.
And we have a motion by Commissioner Page, second by Commissioner Page, any further discussion? If not, all in session, say aye.
Aye.
All the time, same time, motion, carry.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Second thing, the board should consider approval of the D N P law, for the ten, ten thousand budget, with fees and charges associated with, as presented by Mark Reverend, Jim Jones, next.
Hey, my morning, everybody, morning, Reverend, big, uh, modern, um, of your considerations are, uh, probably, uh, 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 like, they know that, uh, 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 number one, all the seventy years, uh, for, for, uh, 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 uh.
Congratulations.
Thank you. On, uh, on, uh, uh, we haven't changed anything, our, our budget, uh, the, uh, or, to get those, these, the things we kind of, putting in classification for our, our, uh, for, uh, something which, uh, um, collects, uh, 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 but, we're anticipating about, uh, that, uh, in our, uh, rest, uh, 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 whether we were adding customer data, or not, so, so, so.
Any questions, on the board?
Filing with workers who provide assistance to the dating and early dating sites in holy places and assistance to voter registration. And their longings for a leave of employment in relation.
Sure.
So that's why I think there's a, at least there's heard it seems, have a voice at the table and I don't know where to... I know there's probably some expertise that the class action decisions you may have. But I just give some direction on what committee, because I think it's gonna start rolling really quick and...
Wow. Wow. Funny.
Exactly. That file where I said a board is there, I mean, it's gonna be, he's gonna bear a warning deal which I... I sort of sit back and I think it's gonna go through if it doesn't happen this morning at Denver. I think it'll probably just come to the end of it. It's gonna be a hurry, yeah.
I, my feeling, I might as well have that lawsuit, um, but I think it's a little late for the ball game. You know, and I think that's probably our, I was already for the four of them, I'd say, right? But I'm very, you know, waiting for the last minute, um, no way would we die for a minute to take the sorry. They're gonna do it to twenty twenty to start that, that, you know, time I'm waiting for the last minute. I've known about that. But I got a little lawsuit, um, and, um, it probably did my thing, you know, with that off. I mean, any policy like this could be half, or even... I'm, 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 um...
Thank you.
I'm fine.
Um, here are a couple of mine, um, okay, so this one, say, um, oh. There's, no, there's one question, Martha Bell, Kimberly Gera, Madera. This is your page in Florida State Federation, Steve Williams, Rosa, it's page in time, you know, Joyce, and then, and then, and then, and more. Thank you. Thank you for explaining.
Are you sorry?
I have not been sorry. And I understand you listening to the conference call today, only the class three that's always had been heard.
Yeah, I see it.
Your, or her.
I love you.
Okay, okay.
Now, I can go for a rest.
Yeah, I just wanna make sure that the whole of the...
Thank you.
I don't think you know the way to the party. I, I thank you.
You all, I mean, believe you.
That's about it. I don't wanna do an evaluation of five of up here in post. We have a, uh, our hearing one oh one, also the first we were to evaluate. And then I'd like to take the results. Here, here, there, there may, there may, there may, with, with, with what we're looking at. After everything is filed, and that's, I think, fine.
And that's the second one oh one.
What you're saying about it?
Are you asking for an average of all five?
Well, if all five, I think it's better than he has been here long enough to do a fair evaluation. Uh, you know, but, you know, give us some, some indication. I don't know, I don't know my value, I didn't expect you. I don't know what anybody else is. Just direct, I'm not directing you to just put, put you up, or, or, average. Average, you know, we could, we could, give us, give the average. Now, if, if we look at, at, at a representative average, below that percentage, then we might as well get further. Not stretch the mantle. But that gives us some, you know, something to say, because.
I, I feel like you should, you should, try to ask the, your evaluation, you know. I understand what you're saying, you haven't been, been here long enough, um, in this capacity to do a, a fair evaluation of, um, I, I think that we can, you know, we have to evaluate our, you know, the, the, uh, law. And so, I know there's some, um, likely issues, like we, uh, all the things there is here in the house. And there may be something on there that, that you have to say, um, um, okay, comment on that because I don't know, you know. But, um, anyway, I was going to say, but I'll say. So that we don't live to months go by past the evaluation date to then do an evaluation. I feel like annual evaluation, whoever you use, whatever point they are, should be done in a time of passion. To be fair to them, and to be fair to the evaluator. Because if, if there are any issues, then you have time to start looking on those. You know, different things what they are, if there are any, and then you have time to start looking to whatever the goal will be. And the way you're, you can separate much later to just to make that decision.
And I would think that, you know, it, it never, it, it never, give two months at least, uh, to think of what we should, or more, get the evaluation done, within, within what they need to say. File results, and then we always, yeah, talk to the, to the, to the, to the. Start two months, we press costs, let him two months in. I think the, uh, anniversary, January third, back in August, like October, November, November first, give us that.
What I want to do is draft a file, can you bring the draft?
Draft a little file, look what you already got.
Do you want separate from regular annual evaluation, or do you want it to be two?
No, that's the file, that's, that's, uh, that's already done.
That's what I was going, I mean, what do you think? I don't know.
Yeah, it might be kind of hard to incorporate that, because it's unusual. It might be hard to draft it, draft a little file. And generally, the contract might, uh, don't be consistent for that. So, but look, you know, if I don't, if I do the evaluation.
That's, that's, I, I know, I, I, I just have a question, uh, and this is a thought, but there are questions. If, if we got the evaluation, um, form, uh, two months in advance, and there was something that, um, had, had been identified, that someone was on one on, going through, let's say, if that was the case. And two months, then, um, if they haven't met us now, then what is, I guess you still got the whole two months being in addition before you turn in, never mind. That's a long question.
Any other, make a prompt.
Okay, thank you.
We're not even gonna do that.
Thank you very much. County Attorney twenty one, the board to consider approval of draft ordinance. So here, we keep these Scott Hart ordinance and advertising as prepared by the county attorney. With your motions, please, I'm on hold.
I know.
Yes, this is how we're spreading.
Well, it's, 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 I think you want outside.
Okay. We want outside here. Pretty sure it's first. Do we have your motions to outside?
I, I want outside, come on.
Now, motions by Commissioner Nance, second by Commissioner Page, all the same as they are.
Aye aye.
All at the same time, motions here.
Now, that uses every step of the school's high school money. Plus the initial I said, that's how it's like what it's worth. And then the other thing is Alex, I guess the shares account, that would be three additional vehicles. So we had four last year, so you gotta have three additional vehicles. You gotta have those. And plus your pricing, we were validated, and I'll be quick to bring that down. So, um, we went from a ninety-nine thousand, four hundred seventy-six thousand, and we did about three years' plan. And that's not all, we're gonna have to do a lot more. So my public's pregnant, the shares, you know, public's was gonna happen, and that doesn't count. Well, we're gonna have to do that in schools. So, if any considerations you have, any magic, if you have any of that, two big numbers, we're resuscitated. We're going to say things, you put our voices, you know, we're having to go back and make a donation, but, um, just, sure. But I want to thank you, that's the other thing, I want to put thanks, because, you know, I thank you for, and this fixing, something, that additional, that donation, for two, and then like, we're having to add, add, that's a big deal. I want to thank you personally for doing that, for all that is important, and y'all know they're all those water carrying black, and, uh, you know, we can just appreciate, y'all know that, that's huge, right? But that's me personally, we're doing it in person.
Okay, well, I just want to say that, uh, we certainly still need paying. Uh, those unfunded mandates that come down all the time, they do the harm. And, um, you know, we still need paying.
Oh, yeah, well, I know it's all recently, it was a fact, because what does it mean, because it's bad, I said, oh, yeah. But we don't want to have it this way, like, you know, we just, uh, I hope that they'll undo any pain, but I hope that they'll go back and do it to Alex. First, I know that, uh, I think, uh, regarding those, it somehow, like, they said it was, and that was sixty-seven million, that they put out, and help it. But I think, uh, we hope that we can come on the back here, and help us, and, uh, you know, help us, and help it, help y'all too, but, uh, but I personally, thank y'all for all the good, I mean, that's been your help.
We need to go along a little bit.
Right, yeah, I'll be there.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
I mean, all you do for the question. Uh, the ninety-five thousand, two, that's what schools pay.
We, we paid twenty- A ninety-nine thousand, that was ten, thirty-four thousand dollars, close down. That was only, I think that was, uh, you make sure, I gotta talk to him now. It was probably more than thirty-four thousand dollars. I have to go back.
That's not, I don't know.
Oh, well, because we thought, you know, we added more, but, but it was thirty-four thousand, oh, time, and the next year, they didn't do it, oh, time, they just did a flat pay.
And that one, one hundred forty-eight thousand was, what, forty-five, two?
Yeah.
And then sheriff gives.
Yeah.
And four hundred seventy-six thousand is what's left.
For seven. And then we, we, we have all the money. And that, that, the reason, I don't have a problem with that, we have an asset, oh, because, um, oh, yeah, but, uh, but, but, but thank you, consideration, the vehicle, you know, we got, looking at all the other, all the, but, but anyway, but anyway. Considerations, we'd be glad.
Thank you.
And thank you all.
Any more else?
Yeah, the part, come forward, yeah, please.
Oh, sorry.
I don't know.
Okay, okay.
Um, I just wanted to clarify a case, all in, first of all, no, in your own, um, I just wanted to get some clar- clarification on the, um, the grant fund and the loan allocation. Is Charlotte Park out of the program? What?
Really, I'm not aware of that.
Okay, that, I want to clarify that. On each form, instead of telling you how the grant fund is located, you have a total of six thousand eight hundred seventy dollars, or, or, John Morris. In addition, comes to Mr. John Morris and Charlotte Park. So we tell, we link the both. Do you know?
Is that for you?
Yeah.
I, I don't know.
I didn't like it.
That, really, well, well, well.
And then the tax, that number, that-
Crazy, when the meeting, he signed that sixty-seven, seventy.
But it's not only, I mean, uh, can you tell me how the mitigation, grant, and this one, they go separate, let it back, with Charlotte Park, they go, along with John Morris, and they're both in the program. And we are, uh, a couple of clients.
Uh-huh. I don't, I don't know, I get, I, I, yeah, you know, the other side, come on. And I, 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 but I would say, uh, it's early now.
What, when you then, uh, hold up?
Ma'am.
Yeah, yeah.
They're both on the, um, you just have a house, right?
We are a couple. Yeah, couples.
They're couples.
Living.
Same house.
Okay.
And they're both getting a house. Right, we made-
You get a couple, you get-
Don't say anything, you want to.
Do, do anything.
Oh, they have, they have different houses, and they're both getting, he is lying there. Thirty thousand, see, of this grant, something like that, they haven't through that. Twenty-five million is paid by each, come on, they don't need to pay, you know, you get the money. And apparently their houses are then, during storm, or whatever, basically through the property. You think, I'm not gonna put it, not, I think, going out, because you have both of them on month one, and this one is permanent, and month one. Um, the woman's south, this, regardless of the court, but we got, said, we've sworn to Charlotte on the other one, and his number.
And that, and that, we stated, they are a couple, and this is relating to, while you put both their names on those, on the floor, it's not, that's why.
It was a claim that you want, our attorney?
The question is, right?
So, but this kind of, correct.
Yeah.
Okay, this has-
I was just, I think, so the legal to, um, grant, because it's a matter of grant, because they need it before they can, okay? Well, thank you, both of them, granting, in the grant office, they're getting, right? I don't know, you have these, one on grant.
I don't believe that they, they had, back then, about, I'm not a nobody, I'm just trying to recall what I heard. I think we had, you have, the bid about correction first, and then now, at that time, the bid committee will need to consider whether there's a, or, that can be part of the consideration with the bid committee. Yeah, I think her, 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 at the, at, at, at that time, and then when the bid committee comes back, we'll go back, when that's on the agenda, and then, uh, what you can, we can speak with, from that, any time, to create an update, if you like.
And the next question is, on the property law, there's, um, you have, there's, you know, for their structural elevation, et cetera, et cetera, and that's, uh, in the, in the number. And they come back here, and they manage that on, uh, utility, this, and that, the garden, this, this one, that, repairs, and we just, uh, we, that will stop.
I'm sure that, that will be addressed, when they, when they need.
And, don't have to care, long, long, uh, no, uh, yeah.
Now, for the bid committee to meet, you can go up to the public. So, if you walk in class, when the bid committee meets, and we have that meeting, then you approve, and the citizens, right? Or, they have eight minutes for that, for the date, I mean, if so.
Or disclose.
How many will come?
Uh, to your place. The county has, this is a, federal county, right, so the county has to fund the seventy-five million as a reimbursement. And the twenty-five percent comes from, at the time of the profit, comes from the profit. So, we do have to pay enough money to get reimbursement.
So, that's your work, it's seventy-seven, four ninety?
No, no.
Eight, five, you want something?
And going to-
Twenty-five percent of that, the county, you think?
Yeah. And then you all, you have, they have, or, they have to fund, and they have to-
Are the other house, um, what was it, four and less of them?
There, there were two others, definitely, off there, maybe eighty, eighty-five thousand.
They're trying, they're trying to find out.
Well, I think, December, December two thousand nine.
If they don't come forward, what, 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 you know, go. What, that, drop down, maybe get less on the return.
We all need reimbursement, always.
I can, so, I, I have to clarify this out, that, um, we, um, we, we have ended for the home ground, if we don't get all of them, if the house got flooded, and I, I know, so, um, I have this eight little ramps, so I know, we can't end it.
That's, that's, that's windows, and, but, they will allow us to adjust the government's work, but not, the coworkers, the building, one, one, but not, we, uh, not, uh-
What was awarded?
What was awarded? We only have a certain amount awarded, because we have workers in that window, and that period, that time period, with that, mitigation, closed, and letting, we have, we have to do, June, uh, two thousand sixteen, to get our coffers, right, so that's here.
And anybody back out, the comment that was just needed, for that sort of, for another event, or that?
And we can, we can do, uh, you know, we can use the money for project manager, or something like that, but, as, only these, though, you know, individual, six thousand were initially approved, and then it's picked out, only four, now we're two, two, kind of, a little.
Uh-huh. Any more else, if you think, so? It's hard to.
I'm asking a question about a referendum, January twenty-ninth, two thousand and nine, uh, before that was passed, day four, two thousand and nine, a little well, and, and you, you-
Do you hear that, Owen?
That's May, that's, that's what I was, though.
We're, we're, we're early.
I believe, this, or, this, this, being a face of the day, may, there's actually may, to do, you order, you do.
Anybody else?
Day four.
That's, it's not, if we're gonna go to, um, six, fourth, informational hour, or start moving, or moving?
I want to say something about, but, yeah, so, the red room, I had a good friend, and, had, had a business in Bay County, and he was one of the best business, here, so, so, when he got to doing, crunching the numbers, he ended up moving to New Orleans, business, in Georgia. And the reason, he told me he did that, and he stood his, not there, some George did, George told me, tax and city, and the power bill, along, paid it over it. I say, of the tax and city, to get started with new business, and the power bill, along, keep it in Georgia, so he said, it should have, it could be, it's over it, and I, that was the reason, that's the reason, we really need to have that tax and city, fast, because that's a good example for me, here, and I was, before, I'm, he told me that, he did, y'all, now, but, but, the thing is, that really, woke me up, it really, you needed that, getting a business, y'all, certainly. And, another thing I got, is, I'm, there, and I'm, I'm, it's flooded, and sad, Jay, I've had a, I went down a long drive, there's a full, people out of long drive, and stuff, and side, and, um, it's really, made that down, water finally, going down a little bit, with that, sunny day, and, uh, Courtney Gray, still got water over at, uh, across the road, what, called, Courtney Gray, full plate, and, uh, come to find out, with a, little bit of research, and, 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 uh, near digging up, on Courtney Gray, the house, the kind of, we got, uh, found, and, and so, I thought, to, to, to get down the road, it, you know, redo, it, go, clear, and, uh, we had people down there, who used to use the flood, uh, and moved out their house, uh, in, in, uh, where it, it, come on, as well, uh, it's not valid, it was flooded, it didn't happen, or, uh, but, it's, it's, but it's going back the other way, and hopefully, just, right, and, uh, the roads, often, done a good job, on helping people, on roads that belong to the county, they went down there, tied roads, and, and, uh, it's, oh, people, getting that, for, for houses, but, I had a lot of complaints about roads down in my business, that are not counted roads, and people real upset with me, because I can't fix, on five roads, and, and, we should, but, I decided to explain to them, that, this is not counted roads, we're down, look, that's all I got.
Was all in there, so, yeah, if you want to, so, I just, we have people, that, within areas that flood, and they're active, and, um, showing sometimes, and, um, you know, unless, um, it's, um, unless we have declared, uh, a disaster, and the governor has declared a disaster, there's no way you can go in and, and help, and they did it, almost one time, they-
But I explained that to them, but then, I go, so, so, I got there, so, here, to get that, and it was, they cleared emergency, and those who did it, and, and counted it, and I tried, you know, pick them all up, and I, I tried to find them, but, 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 helped them, I played, I did. Well, the last, the last, probably, some of the thing, what, Commissioner Louie had, and, I tell those folks, down there on the Courtney Road, that, I, I'm a veteran, Commissioner Louie's district, that I was supporting, you know, to do what we need to do, from drainage, you know, and I provided them, you know, the water, it's crossroads, and four weeks, nothing, I mean, put in box, so, you gotta wait for the dry, it's all, and then we come in there, and, 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 correct the problem, what we're doing, is keep it focused, and in the dry time, going there, doing what, what we need to do, and I, I offered, lots of, Commissioner Louie, if you need what you can, because those folks, they have a problem, though, and, uh, on Friday, I was saying, I had a couple, I put a wheel away, on even where that is, and it really, the right, because I made a statement, to have, to, to, he ran a, 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 you know, five street roads, those little people, and they was a real need, he only bought one load, there's, he has to slow down, and I said, well, if I lose there, I lose there, I personally, give up, and he got the dirt, well, they never could stop on our block, they'll do it, and this man, read me the lie, I spent my money in another addiction, and I had to provide him, my personal money, I spent it however I liked, so, anyway, I parted all these conversations, to teach, that they won't listen, and we had, I don't get, some of these folks, up in Dunder, when we, when we, we explained to them, what you can do, in March, in form of an M S P U, or all of those, but, when you, when you're lucky on the side, it's gonna cost a hundred dollar fee, and you could lose it, they'll never ask for it. I don't know that, but we could, we have a private road, we can't, it's not anything, but we would be broke, I mean, broke, we'd be in bills, we'd be in bills, love is another battle, we can't, we love, it's, um, it's a tough job, to have a commission, against, uh, the ice, but, and, uh, sometimes, they don't, and I still appreciate our other departments, and, and, related, I think, many of the buildings, that, that delivers, for our base, so the water's passed, and, and, uh, I, man, we put some, some, old rock in there, they were told, they're getting their mail, so, that, they can get it from the box, they, she was told, my company, they go, fuck, fuck, and, uh, I have to find any other route, to get your out, to get rid of sale, they, they go away the road, the road, they're gonna go back to the box, so, she told me, we, we are mail, she needs to go to the box, to post up, so, uh, anyway, it's gonna dry off, sooner or later, and our, I mean, I think, uh, great dog, all over the road, for walking, mine, and, and, I had to wait until it runs, and more, but, I had to be down there, except, but I think, probably, pass one out, but, we're good, all of this, I'm well, forgotten, this. Oh, I appreciate it, yeah. Yeah, I come back, um, I had one lady, and her bed ridden, and I had to go pick her up, and, and I wanted to say, I appreciate our fire department, killing it, to build them, move her out of the house, get her, and, 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 they, they worked it, on that, people really appreciate it, they, they, they all, all, I'm, yeah, they did.
Someone else to, the, uh, there was the, the, area, I got all those calls, too, and, um, I do want to say that Hank, um, called me, and said that, um, they had, been looking on it, and that they had actually guided the mail lady through the line, she could deliver the mail, they had showed her how you could go through it, and that she was comfortable with that, but, what they had done, had allowed her to do that, so, I was very thankful to Hank, that he took that extra step, to help her get through, so these people can get their mail, and a couple of them, too, and some of them down there, I was told, get them medicals through the mail, you know, so that them ladies, to get them medicals, to deliver, but, I think that, we, we did a very good job.
I want to thank the great, uh, hospital, feel like that, I want to make a hospital, for the, for the three, I want to thank, for that, for a ride, I guess, I think, when he was on the line, he basically, we have, we have, they, 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 I would much prefer it held up, than to have, you know, like, anyway, I paid, told that I had a date, got the notebook, and it's down, and it's, it's, I want to, well, I want to think that I have, the record, get away from, what, what's the record, if anybody knows, I'm in, saying, that?
It has, uh, seventy-four inches, so, generally, about fifty-seven inches, or, maybe, uh-
That's down the county road, way up, back in the north end of the block, and they all, I'm thinking of always making it real loud. This, this, this is nothing, I've seen that black car down there, under war, always came through, I think John Smith under war. And it makes them, you know, just typically, okay, so it was cut. I mean, but anyway, I, I did hear about those, watching out. He's the white boy. And you know, there's four, uh, people. I don't have no problem with that. That wasn't bad. They were on the block through the, they were fifteen miles, five, six, one, that water pump. So, it feels like it's a lie. I don't need to know. I think it's, uh, that's big. You know, if you ride on a thirty mile, I was quite sure that you ride on a fifty. And then I think it's a lot, sure, I guess.
Pretty short road, isn't it?
Yes. I appreciate your take there, too. I'm, I'm well informed, thanks for all the while, Sam. I want to be good still. I'm sure that's long, you know, that, uh, I'm here with.
Uh, thank you, Sam, yeah, I'm working through with you. Uh, you're Paul Hill, Albury, all that area. Coming from, from that. Uh, and the road is flooded, and all those property that's been built. Uh, one thing I would point out, if anyone called you in, um, the road is flooded, and there's cars, private roads, the animals, the fire department, you know, there. If, if you're notified, probably should have been to be there. And people let this match know, with some flag, so that, I mean, E M F, and fire department does that for a ride, they, they don't do. I think you know it. You know, the flag, National Guard, and, and they're coming, and, and, and they, they make that right. Uh, we're gonna look at one road, that's a private road. How much, how many clothes work, clothes for service, that you volunteer.
I want to, but, but I, I feel like that's the reason my top still.
I guess, it's unfortunate, you know, I think we picked, we picked the road back when it's flooded, you know, each road is wrong, I believe. Emergency order, and those people haven't followed up, kept the road up, you know, uh, uh, now they're back into the same situation. We do that in a lot of areas. But, I know it's a lot of money and equipment, you know, that's done, uh, I think that, that's the thing, you know, a lot of, uh, a lot of water, a lot of, uh, injuries, and stuff people are in, you know, uh, I also like the road department as well. We have a lot of, just sort of, uh, city board, and all of the areas down there. Uh, the road department, you know, they ran out of rock, uh, we're, we're, you know, we're just, it's, it's a lot, uh, but, it won't be anymore. There's, uh, you spend a lot of money. Materials. And I'm about, I'm about to add, and remember, we had a choice when I did, perhaps they're already, they're already looking for, I don't know, with, uh, uh, it's very, it's really, uh, no, we're good on Friday, whenever we're in this. We probably won't try it.
Yeah, they had, they worked.
They tried it, and they found, they, they, they had trouble, it was difficult, uh,
I wouldn't be more than they worked.
Uh, I know it did that. We, we did, think about, notice those waters, over, running, Friday, you know, somebody here. Just, if, if we're in, I mean, we're not in a declared situation, we're in a, um, high, you know, awareness, and people are calling about, um, or, or we know that, that you're flooding, you know, have a scout crew available on Friday. Uh, whether they should follow on, uh, you're boiling red, emergency type situation like that, so, we did that, we did that at the height of flooding, whenever Palm Hill Road was flooding too, and all those kind of things. That was on Friday and Saturday, and they, they worked to fix that, but, uh, the water's still, it's receding, but it's still an issue. Oh, man.
I don't, it, it may be a workshop, I don't know, a little bit, for scheduling the road part. But, you know, I think by Friday, uh, one time they told my graduation, somebody in the box would do our work day. Whether it's productive, or not productive. I, I thought a lot too, workshop. Uh, if we're part, see, I take all my parts, too. And I, and I, and I work day, so, they start working seven o'clock. Or eight o'clock.
About thirty.
Eight, five, thirty.
Seven, five.
And I don't think they're the only ones, you know, that, 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 we need.
I don't, a little while, following our producer down, but, uh, we're putting, we're getting by this, we're getting farmed out. And, uh, there's a couple of guys in the back, parking three thirty. And, parking about, the driver, they were, that. Talking about it, but, and I think, now our day, and you know, I'll be three thirty. But that's, we talked about this, you know, we have to do those type workshops.
And, and one thing that you might wanna, just kinda think about, is, I know that employees might be worried. I mean, there's no doubt about it, that's the first, and, uh, they stood some around, and, plus, you can see it all from the box. And there's a lot of things that you might wanna consider. Like, instead of everybody being on on Friday, divide up, and let some be on Monday, where you still have some on there, and then have some on Friday, so that way, they still get their food. But, the deposit is running on five days a week, but the employees are, are, are split up, so we still get the food, and they still get what they like to.
Yeah. I thought, I was, I was, oh, 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 I, I didn't, I didn't.
Go ahead. But, but, are you trying to?
Uh, just, just a question, uh, is, is road department still, uh, just like the park?
Another blackout, sir?
So.
Of course. No, we think, it's not right, man. It may be great, the park, it's a teacher, but the nature park, we have, we have, we have, so, that, 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 yes, we have. But, yeah, we talked about what's wrong, is that, uh, you can't have things, you know, when you're talking about what's wrong, and, 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 you know, it's, it's, you know. Go for that. And I, I, I just got some news, been out for years. So.
I think the thing, they, they, they're not, they're giving the lungs attention here. Uh, I, I have a question, just one time. I followed up, to be a walkout, on Captain Goodwood. He said, "Get me." Now, first, goes down there and go off, and I did, and she reached that, someone's gonna kill them, they run, and that's it, just walk out. And so I called, you sent an email, tell me to close, with all the loads that I brought. And I thought they were going in there to walk out. Pop out, got in the woods, and the lady's friend, she went back, yeah. And she, and she knew, she knew I brought, she knew that I walked out. She followed up on that. I'm grateful for that, though. There's a lot of places that you can do that.
Well, I think that, this last, he, he had difficult, last week, he had difficulty obtaining the number four lock. And he just got, we're able to get some yesterday, and we said, um, a little bit.
But, you know, that, that's what we don't want to forget about, you know, like, over here.
But, but they're not, they're on, they, they don't have the materials to repair that, no, they can walk out, the seat is just there. We can put some blacks up there, so people don't run out, and they're not black, and, not white. They, they have to be a black walkout. And now, we were, down there, in that area, last Saturday, it's on County Road, uh, they were running, there's a guy, they speak over on it, that, a lot of security on it, that, that, it's about to move in. So, nobody can get there now, because everything's on the water. But it's fine, it's, it's, it's.
I thought I'd take the, the lawn mower down there, there's been a cove or two hole, and, and I'm going down there, catch, rock with it. If water's going through the cove, it's just sucking air.
Is that the home area?
Yeah, that's rock with the old, they would, it's, root of the wood, they had named, they, but they call that the end of the rock, after we paid it in.
I can see all the names.
Yeah, that, 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 end of the rock.
Anybody have anything else? I got one thing. There appears to be some discussion about the bombs on the hospital. Some of the sports members know what happened, back four or five years ago. The county, when you enter your bomb site, and we went through a reassignment of those bombs. Yeah, a lot, exactly, a lot of things I knew of that. We did standby. Which was then a business, y'all are paying off the hospital, so all that money from that bomb, it went towards paying off the hospital, or it was originally a thirty year bond. And I think it was paid off in fourteen, twenty, something like that. So, that's what that bomb, there's no more of it, except for that, that bomb, it was a hospital, that is. Anything else? Then, uh, yes, what's it? Um, at the end of St. Louis, it turns into the Helen Street, which is, we used to, I think, and, because you all have, you, reasonable, four blocks, you're not, I don't know, along the bus. And so, uh, anyway, we, we have a side there, that the county does not all maintain today, so we prepared that along the way. However, somebody that's still there, was asking me, and I think I asked, you know, how to turn it in. On the turnoff, before you get there, on St. Louis Morgan Road, which is our road, we put lawn mower down, and bring a blanket turnoff. At the end of St. Louis Morgan Road, where it turns into the Helen Street, they want the same thing, just like the other driveway path. Like, it is a driveway, they were saying, if the public goes in, to their property. So, that we put the same amount of lawn mower there, just like, when, anybody dropped, uh, car?
You would, you would, uh, you would.
Is it on, on St. Louis Morgan? At the end of St. Louis Morgan, it's, it's a paved, it's soft, and it turns into a lawn mower. And so, before you get to the end, there are several driveways on each side, that we have to, lawn mower, mail, mail mowers, and, and turn off. They wanna know if we can extend that same service to them, the same amount that we put at E M F turnoff. Because it's rough there, where it turns.
Do that, uh, you do that, protect your own, we do a lot of that.
Yeah. But, they, they was, like, that, I mean, this is a project, but it's, driveway sometimes aren't too, right?
Well, that's, uh, I don't know, I don't know what to do.
That was, yeah, and I, but, yeah.
I don't know, I don't know.
Right. I put in a work order, and, and I'm sure they'll, they'll have it, to make sure, if, if it's a loaded garage, it's on the right of way, that's one thing, that they don't, they don't carry the lawn mower in through the driveway. It's the, on the harder, tougher way.
I would.
Okay, but maybe some of the other turnoffs there, maybe it is driveway, but there was pretty wide strip of lawn mower that's been put down recently, adequate nights of now. And, I think that's what they want to know, they get, say, now, but what you're saying is, just at the end of the road, to protect, uh, paint.
Well, I mean, it's, I'm right, I would do, I'd dedicate a route, you know, around, uh, on the street, the road, where all of them, kind of judging, probably, protecting, you know, I'm gonna take the road. Well, yeah, um, but, we need to make sure, um, we're in the right of way, and, um, we're just down in the path, um, we could, uh, uh, any.
What if it's someone's, that cove or?
Oh.
That would, there would be lawn mower path, so I'm not sure if someone has, you know, maybe had a cove or, so, because it's part of that, there would be lawn mower. It's not a cove or, and he has a statement, I, I'm certain of that.
I live on that, I'm like, yeah.
The rock, you say, you want to let, just, the rock, that's long, now you got off.
Yeah, it's got off.
The day, or the, the day of, count.
The county couldn't, but I'll, I'll make, uh, St. Louis Morgan Road, we put a nice, dip lawn mower, turnoff, and the people, come.
On pay road.
Yeah, off of the pay road, but when you get to the end of St. Louis Morgan, and it turns into the Helen Street, which is a lawn mower, then someone down there will notice it, and it's, here's not the lawn mower, from our pay, but down there, road. It's mostly put for all the other people on each side, before you get there.
Where you just want, uh, where pay road, Morgan, yeah. Okay? And where Helen Street begins, now, so you explain why, uh, the, the turnoff, because obviously, the right of way is, is wider than the actual road. You will be the other thing, that there's a right, there's a difference between the roadway, the road, the paved road, and the right of way, and obviously, the right of way has what we call shelters overarm.
Right.
Okay? And if you have a wide shoulder overarm, then you, you have the right, but there's a turnoff, and it goes, like, you know, things, that's right. That was, that was.
Maybe such, not there, the county, not there, somehow, talking, I'm, just, I'm, I'm settled on that.
Okay.
And the reason I did that is because, it was a big of a blow, for a long time.
Long, yes.
I mean, you know, all going on. So, in other words, St. Louis Morgan, and Helen Street, not, and there's, is there a roadway, that's in the road, pay road, or is it, that's the end of the road, not there, it's safe?
I think, I, I was, I was, yeah.
Okay.
Same with that, I'm, 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 on the Helen Street.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's drop off immediately, off the pavement.
Really?
And right of way is, it ends these roads, on either side, that's, we, this is ours, on, you know, and we don't, hope that road is ours, on, for, for. It was part of the right of way, but it's all, it's, it's, the whole issue began, is, down, on, in, 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 or, or, I heard it, you know, on, uh, talking, now, just that, that, it's been, for a while. Now, you know, it's something I've, I've had, but, uh, with, a lot, they don't want to spend a quarter of your foot. That road used to be a two buck travel. I would do, in terms of, they, want two bucks for four. Because, me and my brother, we live there.
We gotta do that.
I did, so, so, we, we walk in, because we would go down on the street, at street, go all the way down to, on Helen Street, that's, that, but go to that one more. Back street. Go all the way in the back, you're gonna go to Helen, you're gonna ride on Helen. Now, the road always was back, but, but, uh, the trouble was trying to maneuver, you know, so, and that, I noticed, for God's sake, I have brothers, in the little road, starting more like that, much worse for, you know, for, for. I'm, I'm bringing it, and all the county, but, those were about the road, we didn't go there, you know, or, or. But I do know, on, how the road, all, immediately off of it, it's a ditch, and, 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 yeah, a lot, and, and, for.
That's true, it's rather.
Yeah, you, you put the lawn mower there, I think it was a lawn mower there, and we, I know we had a lawn mower there. But there's a history on Helen Street, I mean, and it's, um, you know, when I was on the city council, when, when, you know, I was on the pay, Helen Street, the city, but we, the pay Helen Street, and we even went to Martin Head, it's flooded. And then, when it got down to it, um, some of the landlords didn't know, for a year, a lot, like, and so, about that time, um, my four years was up, and I was, did not know from the election, and, um, it was drawn. And then, you have someone else that's gone home down there, and he tried for a long time, and then the city officers, and they didn't own it. And I think the county has started to maintain any part of it. And so, it's just, I do a big, so, um, the county or the city now, um, do not have any, uh, uh, with all the water, everything, do we still have to wait on the heat, right? And how long will we be spraying? All night?
It's, it's, uh,
So, there's, 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 there's nothing you can worry about. We're gonna spray, and we're gonna spray, and, and some of the students, so, I know some of them, they do, I mean, they can't spray with the spray, so, not, that's, maybe it is, the back few weeks. But they, um, I had a personal schedule, that I sent out last week, I waited for that, they scheduled, um, it's just difficult when it's, when it rains, about classes, you know, on, right. And, yeah, it's, it's not, it's not a lot, um, you know, they still, in, in the auxiliary, and they still, the plane, and that truck, pulls on very fast. And, so, um, you know, the truck needs, it's not true, the truck needs a, a, um,
A freight truck.
Um, did, did they ever get, um, the grains, and treats, and water, can you, did they ever get grains, like, in, treat, or, or? Uh, I believe they have to dump. I don't know.
I was talking about the jars, when you, 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 like.
I don't have a lot of that. I, I know they, they got the dump, but I don't know, like, if they're, or, if, if, or, if. Oh, or, thank you, when I say you look at that, uh, pocket, and, and, we got, we, we're, I think, like, right, and, uh, how, we, 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 uh, it's, 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 okay.
So, do you, all right?
Thank you.
It's the one thing that you have, you have hearing, uh, um, and, uh, we got something out, that, now.
The.
You know, you're on the mail, uh, all night.
The document that I got, I think it's, it's, I will copy it to the board, and make you have, you want, I'll copy, will, come back, you'll get served, that copy, or, or even, uh,